I call this meeting to order. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call?
Mrs. Dechara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Splendoria. Mr. Shoner.
Present.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow public comments on resolutions only. Our board regulation allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within the requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Please remember to state your name and municipality of residence and group affiliation, if applicable, each and every time you address the board. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. There was a signup sheet outside for items on the agenda, and nobody filled that out, so everybody else filled the second one out. So I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. That's good. And we're back. Yay us.
Yes, we're back.
Mr. Splendoria is a little under the weather, so he is not joining us this evening, but he'll be back next time. Let's see, committee reports. Anybody have anything?
I have a few.
Great.
For the Cedar Grove REC department, the announcement went out that the pool rates and the opening for this year, 2021, it's out there. It's been published. So we will have a pool open. The membership rates are out there. It's open to residents within Cedar Grove, and it's open to non-resident families. So definitely go out to cedargrovenejersey.org, and all of the Cedar Grove community pool information has been posted. So I know I'm ready personally for summer to be here, so that's great news. And then I went to the North End FSA meeting, which was held in Zoom on Tuesday. When was it? Tuesday night? I can't even remember. The nights are all blurry. It was the 11th, so whenever that was. Last Thursday. And great attendance. I mean, a ton of people joined in. Mr. Grosso came and answered, fielded a ton of questions from, really good questions from parents. I think it was a great session. He gave them a lot of really great information. So one of the presentations that they had was really cool, and we'll see where it goes, but the parents, some of the parents got together and presented an outdoor space committee, like to create an outdoor, maybe not necessarily a classroom, I think, but just one part of it was a classroom, but there was also adding seating in their butterfly garden, which is a huge thing at North End. I don't know if South End has one, but they do. Okay, it's wonderful. Replacing the falling apart picnic table, so anybody that's been to North End knows that they're like lopsided and half-falling apart. And they came up with some ideas of how they're going to raise the money for this, but it was, it was really great to see with some sun shades and a whiteboard shed. It was really cool. So thinking outside of the box, and it's something that they could use in the future, not just for COVID. So I thought it was really cool. So kudos to them for coming up with that and just keeping, keeping things going. So it was a good meeting.
Great. Anyone else?
Yes, I attended the APT meeting on March 9th. They did, they had some discussion about project graduation, the possibility of an outdoor prom. The APT scholarship is out, and the deadline is April 12th for the graduating high school seniors that qualify for it. And they spoke a little bit about the, or Mr. Bayer spoke a little bit about, I think he called it a recharging room and a calming room that would be put in of the high school for, for, we were talking about social and emotional learning and what the future might bring us here, so.
I think you're stealing Mr. Grosso's fire.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Normally I do that, but it's okay.
Everybody forget I said that.
He's crossing off his notes.
All right, so the next meeting for them is May 11th. I'm done.
Smile and wave, Michelle.
All right. Anybody else? You go anywhere? No? Okay. All right. Well, I attended a highly entertaining middle school FSA meeting last night. Let's see, what did we talk about? They are planning a virtual pocketbook auction, which is going to be exciting. They're also planning a virtual book fair that's in the works for some time in April. They are trying to come up with a MMS Come Together Night, not a fundraiser, just something that, that people can do, sort of have, to have a sense of school community. So they're trying to plan something for the end of April, beginning of May. They're thinking about maybe doing some kind of, you know, family activity as a group, obviously virtually. They're going to have a virtual career day. They are looking for business people in the community, so if anybody's interested in talking about what they do, and maybe reach out to Mr. Decort. Normally, they only offer it to the 7th and the 8th graders, but because it's going to be virtual, they're going to offer it to all the grades. Let's see, on March 26th, it's National Social and Emotional Learning Day. They'll be bringing in a motivational speaker to speak with everyone. They had their virtual student council elections via Google Forms. The 8th grade graduation is booked for El Tuopano, and then Teacher Appreciation Day is in the works. And unfortunately, Treps is not happening this year, which is a real shame. I know I've talked about it before, and this would have been the 11th year. And they try, but it seems that the, the Treps company, who we get all the information from, didn't necessarily get back to them on, on ways to kind of do this differently than has been done in the past. So that's, that's a real shame, and I'm hoping they can bring that back in some form. Next year, we had a guest speaker. Mr. Grosso was there last night, and the next meeting is May 10th. So that is the middle school FSA.
And I'm putting a plug in that the board members, I got the approval from Sabrina.
Okay.
I got, I'm not speaking out of turn, but the board members are, their two-year term is up, so if anybody is interested in being on the board at the MMF, Middle School FSA, reach out.
I just wanted to say also that last year I did the virtual career day for the middle school.
Yes, they mentioned you last night, actually, and that they really enjoyed.
Yes, we did it. We did a whole.
So if you're looking to volunteer again, they'd probably say yes.
Presentation, so if there's anyone in the community, especially business-wise, or no matter what the business is, if you can participate, it would be great, because it's a wonderful way for the kids to watch something that's a little different and get experience, especially when you typically used to go in and have a talk with, you know, talk in person.
And just to clarify that as well, because I did follow up with Mr. Chell afterwards, and you would just create, it's all going to be virtual, obviously, so if you wanted to present, it's just a, create a video of yourself, and Mr. Chell has all the details. So reach out to Mr. Chell or Mr. Decort, and they will give you all the details about how to participate. So nothing would be in person. You don't have to worry about that, but it would be great to get a whole, you know, an array of different professions to introduce our kids to.
Like how to be a superintendent, for example, right?
Exactly, or a BA maybe, you know.
All right. We're going to move on from that.
No pressure, though. Or a teacher.
All right, so we have a couple of presentations this evening. Mr. Grosso, are we going in order of the agenda? Okay, great. So do we have to move for the first one, or no? Okay. So first, we are going to recognize the Cedar Grove Girls Basketball Team. They are the 2021 SEC Colonial Division Champions with a 14-0 undefeated season, which is pretty exciting. And I think Mr. Gogarty's going to come up.
Like Mrs. Dai just said, I'm here to honor and congratulate our 2021 Girls Basketball Team on their 2021 SEC Colonial Division Championship and their 14-0 undefeated season. The girls finished 8-0 in SEC Colonial Division Games, and obviously, the 14-0 undefeated season with that, you know, only one basketball team on a normal year finishes the season with a win, you know, so during this unprecedented time, a tough time really to kind of have a season, these girls, this team took advantage of it. They, they, they came to work, they, they showed up every day following protocols, staying healthy, staying on the court, and really took advantage and, and became the first team in Cedar Grove history to go undefeated and, and finish the year 14-0. It was also the, only the third conference divisional championship in our girls' basketball program's history, so another great accomplishment. Real briefly, before I announce them, when I think of really good teams, that kind of separates the good teams from the really good teams, obviously, you know, you need some skill and athleticism about it, but I think what separates those really good teams are kind of three things that come to mind. One is work ethic. I witnessed it on a daily basis during the season. I can go back to this summer when things were up in the air, the teams and sports were kind of shut down for a while, and we got that, you know, okay on July 13th to kind of get, you know, things going again. And the program and these girls showed up behind the middle school following protocol, bringing their own basketballs twice a week from about July 13th to August, you know, 15th, and really put in that work. The second one is team unity, kind of that, that togetherness. Another thing I witnessed each day within this season, within this program, you know, the girls had fun at practice. They, you know, you don't have to be best of friends off the court, but it showed when they were on the court how tight, how much fun they were having to achieve their goal. And the last one is leadership, you know. Obviously, you know, really good teams need really good leadership, you know, from the captains to the seniors on down to the sophomores. Everyone did their part. And then the coaches, the coaches' leadership, from Coach Scanlon, he brought in a new staff, you know, lost, lost, lost his, his assistant coaches to, you know, other jobs. He brought in Alyssa, Coach LaPorto, you know, and they did a tremendous job, you know, getting the girls ready in a short time, but not only that, you know, spending, you know, making the demands during the offseason and getting them to have that work ethic. You know, you know, I'm a basketball guy at heart, and, and I can say that there's probably not many basketball teams in this state who are more prepared than the girls' basketball team game in and game out. So it's a tremendous job. Kudos to, to, to Coach Scanlon, his staff, and, and all the girls, just on, on a tremendous job. So congratulations, our 2021 Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Champions. I usually have, Miss Dai, pass these out. Do you, yeah, I'm going to come down. Yeah, if you could spread out a little bit here. I'm going to start with the sophomores. Taylor Bennett. Mia Green. Caitlin Wolf. Anna Jakowski. Mia Nardello. Talia Racinello. And our seniors, Molly Bauer. Nina Green. Nina Gannon, I'm sorry. I'm looking at Jessie. Jessie Green. And our coaches, Coach Bill Scanlon. Coach Alyssa Lever. And Coach Vin LaPorto.
I like the whole time.
Good evening. I'm Bill Scanlon. I'm the head coach of the girls' basketball team at Cedar Grove. Thank you very much for having us here. It really is a great honor. This evening, trying to figure out what I was going to wear tonight, my wife said to me, why don't you wear what you wore every game? See, when we started to win, I wore this the first game, and I wore it the second game, and you have to respect the streak, so I kept wearing it. But I wasn't the only one that had a little superstition to me. We're, we're probably three or four games into the season, and with social distancing at halftime, I've got Ryan over here, I've got Jessie over here, Nina, everyone's spread out and they can't hear me. So I said, girls, I need you to change your seats. And they looked at me and they said, Scan, we're not changing our seats. Okay, so. And then the last one was Senior Day, and I said to Rob Gogarty, maybe we'll have the parents sit across from our bench and make it easier for them to come out. And he goes, that's not happening. He goes, they've got their assigned seats. They're not moving at all. So everyone respected the streak. And I'm not going to discount the superstition as far as how that may have helped us, but there are a couple of things that really propelled us to the season we had. It just so happened, last Tuesday, I went up for my performance review with Rob Gogarty, and part of the review is I'm asked a couple of questions as to what were the strengths of your team this season? And Rob touched on it briefly. Over the past 10 years, we've built a very strong girls' basketball program at Cedar Grove High School, and the strengths of our program are work ethic and mutual respect. Work ethic. As soon as the state of New Jersey allowed REC programs to happen, I went down to the, to the Cedar Grove Recreation Department, asked them to start a three-on-three league. This was at the beginning of July. And we played three-on-three, current players and alumni, all through July, August into September. As soon as the NJSIAA allowed us to practice, we practiced. And I think we were allowed to practice from July 13th until August 28th, and we never missed a day. We were allowed two days a week, and we made every one of those. Then when school started, our captains took over, and they ran captains' practices through December. We had favorable weather in the fall. All told, from that point in July, when we started, to the beginning of our season, we had 60 games, workouts, or practices, so that when we came in on January 11th, we were ready to go. And it showed right away. And there was not a team that we played that we had not outworked, and it was reflected in our season. Colonial Division champs, 14-0. The other point, mutual respect, from coaches to players, from players to players, from players to coaches. We made a commitment to each other that we would, from January 1st on, do what we could to not self-inflict a shutdown. That meant staying home, being with your cohort, which is your teammates, coming to practice, going home. And we did that for two months. And that, to me, is a great sign of the respect that these kids have for each other. The other thing that was asked of me that day in the performance review is, what do you need to work on to improve your program as a whole? There's always room for improvement. There is. But our program is solid. Over the last seven years, we have won 110 games, averaging 16 wins a season. We have twice tied the school record for wins. We've won two division championships out of the three in the school history. We've won a Christmas tournament. We've been to a section semifinal and a sectional final. We have an excellent program. Girls, congratulations on a memorable and historic season.
And again, girls, congratulations. Awesome job. Yeah, and you might want to leave, because the next part might be a little on the boring side for you. It's riveting for the rest of us, but, but they have school, so they need to go. Next up, budget presentations. So we're going to move? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank, I know everybody left, but Coach Scanlon and the girls, they did a, that's a remarkable feat that they accomplished, and kudos to them, so congratulations. What I'd like to do is I'd like to, I'm going to go, I'm going to give my, my normal COVID update, and this is a little out of order tonight, because what I'm going to present right now is Mr. DeVito will present and will piggyback on, on the rationale and the presentation, and it's part of our series of budget presentations. But I will give you our COVID update and some other updates, and then I'll go into some of the budget pieces. So in February, Cedar Grove Public Schools announced a partnership with Vanguard Medical to provide all employees of Cedar Grove Public Schools an opportunity, opportunity to become vaccinated. A delay in service was caused by reduction of deliverable vaccinations available at local and mega sites. As of today, staff have started the process of the first round of vaccinations provided by the Cedar Grove Public Schools Employee Vaccination Program. This will extend into tomorrow, March 17th. This is available to all staff who have not already been vaccinated or have had their first round of vaccinations. This news is very exciting, and Cedar Grove Public Schools are grateful for our relationship with Vanguard Medical. And I have to tell you, I'm very excited about this. We were very anxious to get this started, and when we got the call, I actually got the call this weekend, and a majority of our staff who haven't, who wasn't already vaccinated, vaccinated, were able to take advantage of this between today and tomorrow. So this is a great, great step forward. On March, on Monday, March 8th, Cedar Grove Public Schools started calls to families of the school district to provide a brief update to COVID in Cedar Grove Public Schools and other pertinent information regarding the reopening of schools. These phone calls and emails will continue until further notice to share important weekly updates, and all calls will start at 7:00 PM each Monday. These calls are done with purpose. These calls are done to share and navigate families to an area on, on our website for information, as well as providing pertinent information as to what are our plans moving forward. One of those pieces, as I shared in our FAQs, our Frequently Asked Questions section, which I'll talk about in just one moment, it gives the deadline of March 3rd, which is a self-imposed deadline that I will share with the public about next steps forward. Even if some of those steps are the same, it still will be a, a time to look forward to information. But those calls into your homes every single night, every single, not every single night, no one wants those calls in their homes every single night, but every Monday is an opportunity for me to share with families who may not know where to look for some of that information that we are consistently updating. Over the past weekend, numerous articles from the New York Times and Forbes shared that Dr. Fauci shared a three-foot social distancing may suffice to reopen schools. Dr. Fauci went on to state that he is, in quotes, "very well aware that that data are accumulating, making it look more like three feet are under certain circumstances." He stated further that he speaks to the CDC every day and that the agency is aware of the data and will be acting on it. Adding the new guidelines to reopen schools will be forthcoming, in quotes, "within a reasonable period of time." This information will, once, once agreed and acted upon, will filter to our State Department of Health and shared guidance to local school districts from our local health department. This anticipated movement shows growth of the current situation and enables local school districts to prepare to move forward once the time is right. Travel protocols, and this is important because we are approaching the, the spring break, and families may want to leave out of state. I have shared this also in the Monday night phone calls, that travel protocols have changed and have been updated to the return-to-school plan located on the Return to School website. If you are planning on traveling outside of New Jersey, get tested with a viral test three to five days after travel, and stay home and self-quarantine for a full seven days after travel. Even if you test negative, stay home and self-quarantine for the full seven days. If you, if your test is positive, isolate yourself to protect others from getting infected. If you don't get tested, stay home and self-quarantine for 10 days after travel. Avoid being around people who are at increased risk for severe illness for 14 days, whether you get tested or not. And I just want to share something which is important, and I share this in the Monday night phone calls. If you feel that you have symptoms, please, and if you're in the process of getting tested, please do not come to school. Please do not send your child to school. Take these precautionary measures. Coach Scanlon talked about the respect for each of his players, and that's, that's, that's a hard task to do as, as a high school student, to curb your socialization practices, but it is imperative if we are not going to close the building down, a cohort down, or sports athletics down. It is extremely important, so please take into consideration, if you feel ill, if you feel that you are symptomatic, or if you've been previously tested and are awaiting results, please do not send your children to school. Again, I'll continue that, that, those notices on Monday, but I just want to share that caveat there to our conversation. Recently, a new section, Are We There Yet?, was added to the Frequently Asked Questions, the FAQs, on the Return to Schools website. This area is where you will find answers to questions. This area is where you will find answers to questions that are currently being asked about returning to a typical school day. This section is updated weekly based on questions that are asked from the public, and those are updated on a daily basis. SELK, which is our Social Emotional Learning Committee, met on February 25th and discussed a review of the council's mission and goals. Committees were established and will individually meet between now and the next meeting. It was shared during SELK's last meeting to properly and meaningfully make recommendations. Work needs to be done with consistency, fidelity, and use of common language. Explorations into advisories and the possibilities of school neighborhoods were discussed. A peer-to-peer update was shared. The Peer-to-Peer Program is a district-wide social and emotional initiative which aims to partner high school and middle school peer leaders with elementary school students. Peer leaders from Cedar Grove High School and Cedar Grove Middle School serve as virtual mentors and support systems to their younger, as support systems to their younger counterparts as they navigate the challenges of the 2021 school year. On Wednesday, February 24th, 20 high school peer leaders and six middle school peer leaders attended the first round of three trainings facilitated by the Lindsay Meyer Teen Institute. The South End and North End Administration and Councilors have begun identifying students who would benefit from this program, and we are excited to announce that the initial supervised meetings will begin next week. The next SELK meeting will be on March 22nd. On March 3rd, 2021, the New Jersey Department of Education announced that SEL for Us and the Urban Assembly designated March 26th, 2021 as the Second Annual SEL Day. SEL stands for Social Emotional Learning. In District, the newly-formed Social and Emotional Learning Committee, SELK, has earmarked our the day to unite the district with a theme of resilience. On Friday, March 26th, the district will celebrate the theme, "We Can Do Anything." CG Panthers persist. At the building level, students may experience lessons, virtual guest speakers, and other activities. At the district level, we will demonstrate the SEL standard of social awareness for participating in spirit, wearing Cedar Grove attire or black and gold to recognize the united, "We can do anything." And again, the peer-to-peer, which I'm going to talk about in just one moment, the Peer-to-Peer Program will continue. It's not something that's done for the 2021 school year, but it's something that is done for a continual process to aid in the support of social and emotional growth of our students here in Cedar Grove. So tonight, what I'd like to do is I would like to walk you through some changes that are going to take effect, and Mr. DeVito, our business administrator, will share the numbers and where we're headed in our budget presentation. But what I'm going to share with you tonight are program changes. These are additions to what we're doing now, where we're moving as a district, and what the future holds for our students here in Cedar Grove. So we look about opportunity, and you'll hear me very often talk about opportunity. So we're going to focus right now on mental health. I just got done talking about SELK. And these are some statistics that were taken from the CDC in 2020. We look at 7.4% of children aged 3 through 17 have diagnosed behavior problems, 7.1% have diagnosed anxiety, and 3.2% have diagnosed depression. If we look at a survey that was done ever having been diagnosed with either anxiety or depression, among 6-17-year-olds, in 2003, that was 5.4%, and in 2007, that was 8%, and 2011-12, it was 8.4%. We look at ever being diagnosed with anxiety, and again, 5.5% in '07, 6.4 in '12, and we see the rising of that percentage. And then again, being diagnosed with depression, that did not change from '07, from 2007, 2011, '12, just by a tenth of a percentage point. If we look at this chart, we can see, the first chart is about depression, the second chart, that's about anxiety, and the third chart is about behavioral disorders. And you can see how that tends to grow, depression and anxiety, in children from 6 all the way to 17. Looking at behavioral disorders will change from the 6, 11, to 12, to 17, based on various supports that can be put into place. So what will this look like after COVID? And that's the biggest question. The reason why I'm showing you these statistics is not because this is an interesting fact, it's because we're surrounded by our lifestyles changing due to COVID. And so ultimately, what is that going to do for your children? And when we return to a typical school day, how will the students acclimate back to that social-emotional response? And a lot of the conversations that I've had with families, and including my own children, there is definitely a regression in our social skills and the anxiety and the depression. And we see that within ourselves as adults. So therefore, our children are feeling those same things, and we will tend to project those feelings also onto our children. So therefore, school, the majority of the day where children spend their time, Monday through Friday, how will we address those needs for them? Well, this year, we started that process. We developed the creation of SELK, which I've just spoken about, and we've created the Peer-to-Peer Program. These are programs and committees and councils that are here to stay. We're investing our time and our efforts into supporting our students. Aside from these introductory programs, we also have been focusing with our counselors. And currently, right now, we have two counselors, and we know them traditionally as guidance counselors, but the national term which we will use moving forward is school counselors because guidance counselors aren't only there to help with scheduling at the middle and high school, but they're there to help also guide with the social-emotional skills and needs of students. So we've traditionally had two counselors at the middle school. We also have a SAC, a Student Assistance Counselor. In the middle school, we have a counselor. And then at the elementary level, we have one counselor that is shared between schools. Well, looking at that and identifying that and trying to be proactive and project what issues will come up for our students, and just taking the tone of where we are currently and how we've been serving our students, there is a need to increase that. So we look at the 21-22 school year and the proposals of where we're going. We look at providing a school counselor, school counselors in each building. That means two counselors at the high school, that stays, including the SAC that functions for our entire district, a counselor at the middle school, and an additional counselor to serve solely in the capacity for that building. When you think about this, and you think about the social and emotional needs, the anxiety needs, we think back of, how was this possible and how were we doing this with one person bouncing from one school to the next? So if I'm at North End, what's happening at South End? How do we service those students? So therefore, the introduction of a new counselor will have that person invested solely in the community of South End and North End. We also look to bring on a Director of School Counseling. And this person would be the person that oversees the entire counseling department. That person also has had experience in school, in school counseling, as well as outside. We will look for somebody with credentials for school. We look for someone with credentials as a licensed practicing counselor, a person that would have perhaps a licensed social worker, somebody that is involved in the field where they go beyond the scope of a school, looking at a larger projected area of a district, but also looking at how are we going to create programs here in Cedar Grove for our families? That's a major component that I do not want to leave out. It's a major component where we have to look at how are we going to support our families, us, the adults, the parents, to help our children and to provide support in that sense. We will have, like I said, the advancement spelled wrong, I'm missing an A there, but Self-Continuation Advancement and the Development of Programming to Address Depression, Anxiety, Behavioral, and Family Outreach. This currently is being done, it's being done in a way when we look at how can we improve and open up new opportunities. But doing this comes at a cost. So how do we get there? Well, after heavy deliberation in prioritizing where we currently are in the district, the answer to that is, to accomplish the advancement and the focus on the mental health of students, the position of media specialists K through 12 will be dissolved to provide the inclusion of counseling. So what that means is, is that the high school will no longer have the position on staff as a media specialist. Middle school did not have that position, but at our elementary levels, that position will be dissolved to create the openings for the counseling. Now, that may be worrisome, and what happens, how do we compensate for that? We compensate for that where a lot of our work, and I want to share that what the media specialists have done in this district is priceless, and it's appreciated, and it has been meaningful. But weighing where we're going after COVID and where we're going during COVID, because COVID's not over, we have to look at where we are as a district and how do we tend to those needs. And if we could, we would do everything, but that's not possible. So the technology piece, which is currently being done by our media specialists, but our teachers, our individual teachers have become, I don't want to say experts because we can't always grow, but we've become very well-versed over the course of this year because of the forcing of how we had to operate. And those strategies of reading and so on and so forth will be taken on at the elementary level by the teachers, but I will share there's another addition to what I'm going to be talking about in just a few minutes. So to make this possible, this does not, it comes at a cost when we look at programming in one particular area, but it doesn't come at a monetary cost when we look at how we're moving forward. So what about student recovery after COVID? And how do we move forward? Because there is a loss. And I would be foolish to stand up here and say to you that there isn't a loss of what has taken place based on our scheduling and based on the restrictions and confinement of how we've had to operate this past year, including March of last year into the end of the school year. So making up for learning losses will require best practices and interventions. We look at scheduling. Do we schedule the same way? Do we continue what we've been doing? Does that work? Or can we get more out of our schedule by looking at it in a little bit of a different way, manipulating it in a little bit of a different way? Data analysis will be key to this. Not that data analysis wasn't key to this prior to COVID happening, but it will be even more important because we haven't had our NJSLA, which is not the end-all-be-all. It's just a snapshot of a child, and it's a piece of the puzzle. But analyzing where we are and where children are helps to drive the instruction of our staff. It helps them to understand, this is what we need to focus on. These are the areas across this grade level that we need to focus on to get them to the next level when they get into the middle school, to get them to the next level when they go to the high school. Teacher collaboration. Now, more than ever, teachers collaborating is key, and they've been doing this, and it's been phenomenal. And what our staff has offered, that your children here in Cedar Grove, is absolutely outstanding. It's something I'm very proud to be part of. And tracking student engagement and monitoring academic progress. These are all those pieces of the puzzle that will help us to get where we need to be after COVID, although it's not going to happen instantaneously. And one of the things we've talked about, and you've heard me talk about prior, would be the summer step-up program, especially when we look at our elementary-level students, about how can we prepare them, those students that qualify for that work in the summer, and those parents that would want to participate in that over the summer, of how they would move up and provide them that step up to go into that next grade. So if we look particularly at the English, this is coming from the 2018 New Jersey Performance Report, because quite frankly, that's the last time we really were able to get information that's shared by the state through the NJSLA. So you look at this little gauge over here, and you'll notice that 1 to 40, the 39.5 is below standard and meeting standard and exceed standards. Well, here we are on the cusp of that 59.5 over there, somewhere in that range, but we didn't quite make it to the exceeding standard. So some of you will say, hey, that's okay. We did it. We met standards. Well, that's what we met in 2018. If we were to do a survey right now to see where our students were, perhaps they still stay there, or perhaps they may tick back. Our goal is to get out of green and get in that blue. That is vital. It is vital, especially at the elementary levels. Now, this takes into consideration the entire district as a whole. This doesn't break down elementary, this doesn't break down middle, and this doesn't break down high school. This takes it as a whole, and that's excellent right there. But we can always look to do better. But COVID jammed us. COVID stopped what the progression was. So we have to look at and find ways to make up for that. And I will always share that our goal is to be in the blue. Our goal is not to be in the green. So to do this, I want to share with you how this progresses at an elementary level and how it progresses to a high school level. Our current advanced placement, we don't have international baccalaureate courses, but our advanced placement courses, and Mr. Bayer had shared this during his presentation several weeks ago, about of our 11th and 12th graders, we've got 29.1% of those students that are enrolled in those courses were below the state average. That needs to change, and that will change. But that starts, believe it or not, that starts at the elementary level. That is when students are actually preparing for higher-level courses. That is when they are preparing themselves and acquiring those foundational skills that they need once they get into middle school. Grades 1, 3, and 5, pivotal years in elementary school. I know here in Cedar Grove, 5th grade is in the middle school, but those are traditionally elementary school grades, 1, 3, 5, extremely important grades. Those are the benchmarks for what you're going to see up here on the screen. Dual enrollment courses. We've got 7.7% of our students back in 2018, 11th through 12th graders, the state equivalent is 19%. We're below that. Again, where does that start? That starts at the elementary level. So how are we going to do this? Well, it's the inclusion of a reading specialist at an elementary level, which we are proposing. This position is very different than, we don't necessarily have a certified, we have staff who are certified in reading specialists, but we don't currently have a certified reading specialist in this capacity at this current time. So you ask yourself, well, this is going to add another position to the mix. Well, not at cost, because Mr. DeVito will share those figures with you. We're able to accomplish this by movement. But what does a reading specialist do? Well, a reading specialist provides leadership and support for integrating high-quality reading language and art skills in all content areas. A reading specialist, I'm not going to go through all of this because it will be here all night, but a reading specialist will model, demonstrate lessons with classrooms that improve students' literacy performance and complete, I messed that up, a complete individual assessments for students as needed. This is a person that will assist in focusing professional development activities, a person who will support teachers in appropriate strategies, a person that will look at effectively creating strategies and inclusion of instruction for students where it's reflected appropriately in a student's IEP. Study, evaluating, recommending new instructional materials and methods and programs, and assuming the facilitation, data analysis, and guidance responsibilities of assessment, analysis software for our students. This person would look to move between elementary schools. How will they work tightly with the teachers? How will they work with large group instruction? How do they work with small group instruction? How do they take data, disaggregate it, and then develop, in conjunction with teachers, a way to help drive instruction and prepare a plan for that student that works appropriately for them? Once we have somebody like that that will be able to do that specific work, it's specific work, we start to take those numbers, that numbers, and we start to rise. And ultimately, that's how we start a start of a process of recovering our loss during COVID. So how do we start to invest in some of those district opportunities? Well, one of those ways is through transportation. Currently, right now, we spend per student around $58,000 per student on transportation. Overall, we're looking at 1.5 Overall, we're looking at 1.5 million plus on transportation over the course of the year. We outsource that transportation. Cedar Grove does not provide in-house transportation to our students. We utilize other companies to do this for us. Well, our goal here is how can we reduce the cost of that and provide that service in-house? We start with the ability to provide a fleet of transportation. That looks at two 54 passenger buses. That, those buses will also be utilized for athletics. When you, when, when our, our athletes go from town to town, that costs. And that costs a pretty penny to move them from town to town. So we look at, can we do that in-house for ourselves? So two, two 54 passenger buses, three minivans, one 16 passenger van. This is, this could be a start for us and the building of a fleet. This also leads to something else. It's a cost savings. If we look one through, years one through five, we're looking at at least $50,000 plus as we move forward. Year five plus, $117,000 or more. But this is where it's very interesting, where we, we open up the door to create a jointure between ourselves and other surrounding communities to provide a revenue builder. Perhaps this is something where we have a student that's going to this, this out of, out of district school. Perhaps somebody from an adjoining town has that same school that, that their student may be going to. We can provide that transportation. It's a revenue builder for us as we start to move forward. So these are all ideas which seems like, why is he talking about all of this? It's out of the blue, but it's not. It's a plan to move forward and these are just some of those pieces which Mr. DeVito will talk about. But I did want to share this with you tonight because when you start looking at these things and you start hearing about this, I want you to understand the rationale and the reasoning as to how we are moving forward and how we're preparing our district. Although we're in COVID, life doesn't stop. We must still proceed and we must still be able to go and provide a solid education with advancements and opportunities for our students. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight and I'll turn this over to Mr. DeVito.
Good evening. Right. And at our last board meeting, a couple of our department budgets were talked about athletics. Athletics, um. Special ed, sorry, special ed and technology. So, so tonight I'm just going to be talking about the proposed budgets for the remaining pieces of the budget. They're on the screen here from regular instruction to health services, guidance, media services, instructional, staff training, administration, buildings and grounds, transportation and benefits. This slide here just gives a summary of the total budgets in each area. I have slides as I progress that will give a little bit more detail. So you can see for regular instruction programming, raise 9.3 million and benefits, you know, 6.8 million. So I'll be talking about them in a little bit more detail here. For regular instructional programming, as you saw on the previous slide, it's amounts to $9.3 million in our budget or 20% of our total budget. Basically, in this category are the salaries of all of our regular instructional staff in grades K to 12, plus any substitute teachers, anytime we pay any teachers for, for. Can everybody please silence their phones too? Then also class coverage by teachers, anytime we do any detention and home instruction is included in the salaries in here. For our purchase services, these are basically any software services that the district uses. We have our, a portion of our student software, which is Genesis is here. Some, excuse me, some of our technology software is also included in here. We have all of the leases for our copy machines and every building is included in here. Our supplies are the supplies for every grade level and every subject area from K to 12. And textbooks are for any replacement textbooks in each school. Not any new textbooks, but anytime there's any additional students or if a textbook gets damaged, it's placed in this budget here. Another object is just $1,900. That's just some expenses for the SAC in the high school. Next, we have our health services. These are all of the nurses in the district, including any substitutes and summer work that they perform. Our purchase services, this is for our school physician, which is Vanguard. And they, they, the cost for them and any drug screenings that we do and our Hep B shots for our, our staff and physicals for our staff. And also supplies are included in here for, for each school, for the, in each nursing office is included here. Next, we have our guidance department. As Mr. Grossel mentioned previously, we are adding some guidance counselors here so that that's included in this budget here. We have one for a guidance counselor in every school. Also the SAC in the high school is included in here. We have a secretary in the high school and summer hours for the guidance counselor is also included in here. Our purchase services is the remaining percentage. We have 80% of our Genesis student software is charged here. And for supplies, this is where we have all of our supplies for guidance department, any PSC, PSAT books, SAT practice books, acupressure tests. That's all taken from this budget. And our other objects is some memberships, professional memberships for the guidance counselors and also Naviance, which is a software that they use. Media services, this is where, as Mr. Grossel mentioned previously, there are no salaries here anymore because there's no more, they've been dissolved. So, but there is still a budget in here because we still do get some, some subscriptions for the, the schools. That's included in this budget here. We have a set engage learning, info-based learning, proquest information. Those are just some subscriptions that the schools use. We also have the payment for the virtual high school is also included in here. Next is our instructional staff training. Here in salaries, we have a percentage of our salaries for our district supervisors and we also have, curriculum writing is also included in here. For purchase services is the services that we use such as evaluation software for frontline, Linkit, conquer math workshops, some professional development workshops and some AP workshops that we send our teachers to is included in our purchase services. Supplies is some, some more testing that we do. We do ELL testing, we do NVD testing for gifted and talented students. So that, that is also included in here and some more. We do some parent evening events and student events and that's included in here. Next, we have administration. The salaries here is for everybody in the superintendent's office, everybody in the business office and all of our principals and vice principals in each school. And also our directors, our athletic director, our director of special services. They are also included in the salary in this department. Legal fees are obviously our fees that we pay our general counsel for that, for special ed council, our, our label council and construction council is also included in there. We have our audit fees for our audit that's performed every year. We have architect perform stuff. Some of our purchase services are such as for our policy with Strauss Esme, our fixed assets, our ERA consultant, our copy releases, our SWIFT reach network and any advertisements that we do comes from here. Some of our software for computer solutions, for our accounting personnel software comes out of here. The communication line, this is the fee for our Optimum Light Path and for posting machines and anything to keep the schools up and running. Verizon, our cable boxes included in here. And supplies are just the supplies for all the school offices and also our posters machine in the superintendent's office. Some other objects are reimbursements that we do for fingerprinting for our volunteers and some memberships and dues are also included in this budget. Our maintenance and custodial budget is obviously a big budget of $2.9 million. We have from last May to currently, we have had to spend a lot of extra money on some COVID stuff from disinfectant and getting some more supplies. We have gotten some help from the, some stimulus packages in the federal government so that, that money is going towards that, helping this budget here. But we have all of the salaries of all of our custodians, our grounds workers, our supervisors, any overtime or substitute work comes out of the salary here. Our purchase services, this is for anytime we hire any outside vendors to come in, any electrical work, HVAC work, plumbing work. Anytime we have any equipment repair, any boiler work, locked up repair or anything like that, it comes out of this budget. Our insurance is the premium for our property insurance, our legal liability insurance and student accident insurance comes out of this budget. Supplies are everything that we use, custodial supplies to maintain the cleanliness of the building. A lot of this is all of our, where our disinfectant for our COVID cleaning comes out of here. Then energy is another big cost is all of our PSNG bills, our gas energy and also gasoline for our vehicles comes out of here also. Transportation, here are, we have a small percentage of our secretary and our transportation liaison comes out of, is the salary in here. We do have software that we use to run all of our routes more just to guide them. So when we give them, so we know where all the routes are. Our aid in lieu, this is the money that we pay to families that don't attend Cedar Grove schools. If they attend a private school, they're allowed and they're past the mileage, they're allowed to get an aid in lieu payment. A regular ed, this is the transportation that we do for our, we currently have four buses that take all of our, between the middle school, high school and Southend School. We do have four routes that go and pick up students, anybody that's beyond the mileage, they qualify for this. So that's budgeted here. Our athletic and field trips is also here. And our special ed routes, currently we have 15 out of district routes that we pay for, that's included here. We average about $58,000 per route. And we are looking to, as Mr. Grossel mentioned earlier, to purchase some of our own vehicles this year. And the routes that they would go towards would be our most expensive routes. We usually pay a per diem fee towards, for every school. So you know, obviously the ones that are further away, you pay a higher per diem fee. So we would look to take over those routes first before, before anything else. And lastly is our benefits. Included in here is social security payments. This is any payment that we make to the state for any non-certified staff member, such as any secretary, custodian or paraprofessionals. Our pers is also a, is the pension payment for non-certified staff, such as, as I said, secretaries, custodians. DCRP is more pension payments. That's for hourly employees that work under a certain amount of hours per week. That's what we pay the state for that. Workers' comp is our, the premium for our insurance that we have for all of our employees. Our health benefit number is large, $5.7 million. This is all of our medical prescription and dental coverage for, for the whole staff. Tuition reimbursement is as per contract, any, we reimburse staff as they further their education. Other benefits is some uniform allowances for our custodians and grounds workers and some payments to our flexible spending account, our third party that, that does that. And compensated absences, this is also as per the contract for amount that we have to pay for anytime a staff member retires. If they have sick days or vacation days, we do have to reimburse them for those days. So that's another big amount of our budget. It's a, you know, almost $6.8 million or about 20% of our budget. So just so everybody knows our process here, tonight, the board will be approving the preliminary budget. That gets submitted to the county office and they, they review our budget, make sure everything looks okay. And then after they approve it, then it gets advertised. Then we have our public hearing, which is scheduled for May 4th at 7:30 right here in the high school. And at that point, the, I'll go into even more detail with the budget and then we'll be approving that. And then that, once the board approves that, that'll be our set budget for the 2021, 22 school year. And thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. When we, when we, when we look at social emotional learning for students, it is a necessity even prior to COVID, but more so now. And I talked, I touched a little, a little bit upon that, but I want us to think about, you know, prior to COVID, we had students who had schooling anxiety or how to, how to solve conflict resolution, how to navigate through some, as a high schooler, how to navigate through some serious situations such as relationship, relationships start to happen with each other at that point. Children introduced to substances, children are introduced to worldly events that they are passionate about and that may be seen in other ways from, from other students. So that's a tough thing to navigate and quite frankly, that's a tough thing to navigate as an adult. We, we ourselves have, have difficulties navigating through those, those pieces. So now more than ever, when students have not had that ability and it, it is something that has been studied and it's, there's been a tremendous amount of literature and articles out there about students as they have moved into, out of a traditional school day and learning how to navigate through the box or the screen on your computer, that is definitely not the same thing as what happens when we're, when we're dealing person to person. And I will just give you my own, my own story. I have, one of my children finds it very, is very comfortable right now talking to their friends on a computer screen or on an, or on a phone. The reality of it all is, is that it's, it's, it suffices right now for the moment, but it's not going to carry you through. We as human beings need to have that personal back and forth. We need to read body language. We need to understand various points and how to have, how to solve that conflict resolution. When somebody does something that you may not like, you can't just flip down the screen or you can't just end the call. That's not life. You have to deal with situations head on. So now more than ever, when we focus that effort onto social and emotional learning, the counselors that are in each building, they're, and the teachers as well, because teachers don't only teach content, they teach life. And that is the honest truth. They teach life. But the counselors who have been trained in methods, have been trained in systems to how to, from lunch bunches to one-on-one, to group, to class, to class instruction. Those are all pieces of this big puzzle that we are navigating through that will allow our children an upper hand. It is going to be very, very difficult to transition back into the school room or individual classroom. And especially for our, for our students who have not stepped foot into a. And especially for our, for our students who have not stepped foot into a school this year at all. And that is, it was allowable, and it was something that was a personal preference of families, and I, I respect that. But when we do navigate back into the classroom, there will be a lapse of time. Although, we may have seen our friends outside, maybe through a rec program, maybe through hanging out at a park, or whatever that situation may be, that is very, very different than the rules of the school and how we operate within a schoolhouse, how we operate within that school, that room itself. And things that were maybe a little acceptable outside of the school, those things aren't acceptable, and how do we get ourselves back into that position? And how do we get over the fear? I've talked about this since I've got here, since I started my first day here in Cedar Grove, I talked about the fear. And fear in adults causes us to make the decisions that we make. That is the same thing for our children. They have fears, they watch the news, they talk, we talk, I mean, I talk to my kids about what's going on, so they're developing their own stance on what is going to happen. The first day of school for students was, we enter next year, and I'm, I feel extremely positive about moving forward for a typical day as we move into September. That's gonna be, that's gonna be frightful for some of our children. There will be fear involved. This is not, this year was by far not the norm, and we tried to normalize it in some way, we called it our new normal, we called it, this is, well, this, we're making the best out of a situation. But let's face it, there's nothing normal about what we're doing. So therefore, we need professionals in the field that can focus their attention on those mental health issues that plague us as adults, that will plague our children. So therefore, the investment into our counseling department and the goal of developing a directorship of counseling in this district and opening up doors for family outreach and family programs and connections, that will make that transition a little bit easier to swallow for our children and for you as parents, because I'm included in that category as a parent, to bring some solace that we as a district are doing the most that we can for your children. That is, and I talk about as an investment, this is an investment. This isn't a one and done, and okay, it's a fad, and it's, it's a moment in time, it has nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with investing in our children's future, because, and this is a, this is true, the better our children are, the better our children's mental health are, is the better they will do academically in school. And that is a proven fact. There's a tremendous amount of research out there that shows that correlation, and we know that for ourselves as adults. If we can make that connection, if we are mentally, if we're mentally healthy, then our days and the things that we need to do, whether it's our jobs, or dealing with our families, or dealing with a crisis other than the global crisis that we're in, it makes it easier to navigate and make logical decisions. And for our children, it's about making those logical decisions, it's about raising our children to be good people, to understanding and differentiating between what is right, what is wrong, and how do we treat people, and how are we empathetic towards people. School is not just about academics, it's about that whole social emotional component, and that's what makes a good person, and that is what we're investing in here in Cedar Grove.
it. And as we move forward with the budget process. All right, moving on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B5?
So moved.
Second. B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of March 2nd. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of February. B3 is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of February. B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary report for the month of February. And B5 is a motion to approve the, the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriations in violation of the code. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dieh.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B6?
So moved.
Second.
B6 is a motion to pay the following listed bills that were in our packet. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dieh.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B7, B7?
So moved.
Second.
B7, to resolve at the following tentative budget, annual district budget statement and supporting documentation for the 21-22 school year be submitted for approval to the Essex County Superintendent of Schools. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Actually, sorry, yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I just wanted to say, first of all, while we're approving the original, the first draft, I wanted to just let everybody know that what we talked about tonight, what Mr. Gross talked about tonight with SELC and the social emotional learning, is just tremendous. And when we found out that we were going to be looking for a new superintendent in the middle of the pandemic, I think one of our goals was to see this move forward. It was a goal before the pandemic, and it's now tenfold. So to see this happening is just tremendous, and I want to say it was one of our main issues when we were interviewing. So thank you for, for putting this together. I never thought I'd see it happen so quickly, so.
I think we got the right guy.
Yeah, I think so.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dieh.
Yes. From the super, I'm sorry, from the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1? There's a lot of pages, so many pages, through S20.
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to retroactively approve Krista Matera, MMS math teacher, at the rate listed. S2 is a motion to approve the following staff members for substitute positions. S3 is a motion to approve Ryan Fieron as CGHS Assistant Varsity Baseball Coach. S4 is a motion to approve the following as volunteer coaches. S5 is a motion to approve the dissolving of the school library specialists. S6 is a motion to approve the job description for the position of reading specialist. S7 is a motion to approve the job description for the position of Assistant Supervisor of Building and Grounds. S8 is a motion to approve after-school math strategies at Memorial Middle School. S9 is a motion to approve Andrew Vanderhorn, Spring Wait Room Advisor. S10 is a motion to approve Anthony Longo, Night Custodian, at the rate listed. S11 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent start date procedure. S12 is a motion to accept the resignation of Claire Swanson for the purpose of retirement as high school media specialist after 39 years in the district. Her last day will be June 30th, 2021. S13 is a motion to reemploy and set salaries for the tenured professional staff members shown below for the 2021 school year. S14 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured professional staff members shown below for the 2021 school year. S15 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the tenured secretarial staff members shown below for the 2021 school year. S16 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured secretarial staff members shown below for the 2021 school year. S17 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the custodial staff members shown below for the 2021 school year. S18 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the paraprofessional staff members shown below for the 2021 school year. S19 is a motion to set salaries for the staff members shown below for the 2021 school year, according to the new bargaining agreement for the CGEA for the purposes of retroactive pay. And S20 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. Any discussion?
Well, I just wanted to, you know, send a big wish out to Claire Swanson for everything that she's done in the district. I know that Michelle knows her better than I do, but having been involved at the high school and all the stuff that she's done up here, deeply appreciative and sincerely wishing her the, the best.
Yes, I would like to piggyback off that, and from a personal note, Mrs. Swanson was my librarian at the time, because that's how old I am, when I was here. So she has been in that position for all four of us at the Miga household. So thank you, Mrs. Swanson. I think she did great things for Cedar Grove District, and I wish her all the best in her, in her retirement, you know? 39 years. Wow. I mean, and look at me, I'm brilliant now, so, so thank you, Mrs. Swanson.
Well, she had three members of the Dieh family, but it did not include me. So best of luck to her in her, in her next adventure.
Sincerely, yes.
Yes, yes. All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dieh.
Yes. Under policies, are we reading anything this evening, or, or we've already read it? Remind me.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're not reading anything, is what you're saying? Okay. Under policies, can I have a motion for S21 and S22?
So moved.
Second.
S21 is a motion to suspend bylaw 131 that requires two readings to adopt a bylaw or policy and adopt the below numbered policies with one reading to be consistent with CDC guidelines. And S22 is a motion to approve the second reading of the following policy update, P8451. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dieh.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S23?
So moved.
Second.
S23 is a motion to approve Colleen McElroy to write curriculum for financial algebra at the rate listed. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dieh.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S24 and S25?
So moved.
Second.
S24 is a motion to approve the following contract for special education student as recommended by the Director of Special Services. And S25 is a motion to approve the proposal from LE Consulting LLC to serve as the Director of the Panther Dual Enrollment Program between Cedar Grove Board of Education and Montclair State University at the rate listed. Any discussion?
I just wanted to comment that S25 is, is exciting about this dual enrollment program that we've talked about previously at other board meetings.
Absolutely.
Having our, having our students the ability to go to Montclair State and take classes there is going to be tremendous.
At a discounted rate.
Yes, at a, at a massive discounted rate.
With the same credits.
That's right.
Amazing.
Yep. All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dieh.
Yes. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. In this section, we allow public comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allot 40 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Please remember to state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable each and every time you address the board. And we had a sign-up sheet, and I'm just going to call people in order. The first person I have on the list is, is John Martinelli.
Good evening, board members, good evening, residents. I want to thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak for a couple of minutes. I just want to address, I have three items I want to address. One is a question, the second is a suggestion, and the last is a question. And I'll start off as follows. So item number one would be, just want to know, why did North End stop talking about and teaching about the explorer and discoverer of America, Christopher Columbus, on Columbus Day and as part of American history? Especially that over 40% of Cedar Grove residents is of Italian ancestry. My grandparents came from Italy for a better life and viewed Columbus as a hero who brought Christianity to the New World. Item number two is a suggestion. I have a very strong suggestion directed to the board, since they are a big proponent of diversity and inclusion, as we all are. Can we going forward teach our children about American history and history in general that will be diverse and inclusive of all people of different races and ethnicities? Can we go forward, teach our children of all races and ethnicities who came to this country, who endured religious persecution, bigotry, living in crowded and unsanitary conditions, working around the clock, and many other hardships? These same peoples who endured these hardships and overcame these hardships. For example, like you had the Italians who were perceived as criminals and troublemakers with the mafia and everything, these people, we had situations where they were hung in New Orleans. We have Chinese and other Asians who were executed after railroads were completed. We had Irish who endured slavery and need not apply for jobs. We have come a long way as a country, because if this is a racist country, then why so many people from all over the world still come here, and want to come here? The reason for my suggestion is currently we are leaving out certain groups of children, making them feel isolated, and that their history is not as important as others. In addition, it makes children ashamed of their race, causing anxiety and other mental issues. For example, I have a son in fourth grade and a daughter in third grade. My son and daughter did not know race until they were exposed to it at North End. They looked at my wife and myself as mom and dad and not as mom and dad from a separate race. To all the individuals on the board who have children, we all know that they are a gift from God, and we love them unconditionally. My whole world is my children. John Jr. is the reason why I'm here today. My son came home from school one day and was very upset. I asked him what happened. He said he was ashamed to be in white because of how white people treated black people during slavery and post-slavery, and during discrimination at every turn. Could you imagine your child telling you this? This was spoken about through children's readings from the beginning of the school year and ramped up from Martin Luther King through the end of Black History Month at the end of February. So this is, this happens to be six months of lecturing the children on these issues. I can't imagine the flip side of a black child hearing this for six months, who more than likely feel she is not liked by anyone, especially whites. And I know personally racism firsthand, growing up in Brooklyn during the 1960s and the 1970s. For the current month of March, women's history is being taught regarding discrimination, triumphs of women, especially black women enduring both discrimination and racism. I personally feel we should spend less time on these social issues that should be taught at home, and more time on educating our students on reading, English, math, and science, since our children are falling behind because of the COVID lockdowns. I am speaking on behalf of my family, but I know many other families with the same sentiment. Lastly, this question is directed to the board, but I'm mentioning a name only because that individual said something. Mr. Gross, you responded to a parentless board meeting on why St. Catherine's in Cedar Grove is at full class, full capacity, learning while Cedar Grove Schools are not. I believe your, your response was that they are not following protocol. Can you elaborate on your response and how you know they are not following protocol? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your, your comments, and I appreciate that, and I respect your particular point of view. So I'm going to try to, please forgive me for forget any of your questions, I'll just ask you to repeat it so I can answer them for you. So your first question was about Columbus Day, and your, your personal feelings towards that, and your, how you're proud to be an Italian. I will share, I'm Italian myself, I'm very proud to be Italian. I will share, I'm Italian myself, I'm very proud to be Italian. I will share that the district is taking steps in looking at the celebrations of all people. It is extremely important, as we move forward in our educational directives and through our instructional practices, that we involve all cultures of people. And that does include, that includes Italians, that includes black people, that includes Latinx people, that includes Asians. You're right about how America is a place where people want to go to. It's because we are to be an inclusive society. And we also have to be students of history. And history itself has not necessarily showed that we were always like that, and sometimes we continue not to be like that. But as educators, our goal is not to have a political stance. Our goal is to educate students on a historical perspective and allow those students to make up their own minds. We do not insert our own opinions as educators, we insert facts. So one of the things that we've created here in Cedar Grove, based on the evolution of society and based on the evolution of education, is the creation of the Equity and Diversity Advisory Council. None of us up here, as board members or as myself as a superintendent, profess to know everything about everything. Therefore, we rely on those who are involved in other organizations, we rely on those who are of a different culture, of different religious backgrounds, to help shed light to our curriculum and instruction department, excuse me, that will ultimately allow light on broadening our scope of what our country and our world has become. So teaching about Christopher Columbus is not, it's not part of a council culture. It is part of, this is history, and how did that impact the many Americans, or how did it impact the world as a whole? And that is our job, to share out the factual information. I also want to share, when we talk about a diverse history, you'd share about that, a diverse history, I agree with you 100%. Children are a gift from God. I have many children myself, and this is the reason why I went into this profession, because I feel children are such a wonderful group of individuals that are truly, right now, the architects for your future and for my future. My goal as an educator, and our goal as Cedar Grove, is to inspire children. Now, you shared your story about how your son felt that particular way. I can't speak to that because you, he's not my son, but I will share that if that is how he felt, I would take that as an opportunity to ask, why do you feel that way? What made you feel that way? Expand on that conversation. I think what we need to do, and what we encourage our staff to do, is to engage in conversations. Children are inquisitive. They want to know what's going on around them. They're surrounded by so many things that are happening on social media, and it's not just on television anymore. When you and I were growing up, it's social media, it is the conversation that's happening next to them, it's YouTube, it's Twitter, it's Instagram, it's all of these different pieces that we were never part of, but now that's part of their culture. And honestly, we need to, we need to, as teachers, adapt to that, and how do we engage them in different ways? Part of that is creating an open and an honest conversation. And those conversations, I will share, are difficult. They're difficult to do. They're difficult conversations to have, based on different opinions that are out there. But ultimately, what we need to do is to not stifle the inquisitive nature, but to bring to the surface and have a factual understanding of why. The other piece I wanted to share as well, and I just want to just piggyback on one other thing, that presentation that I did about social emotional learning, that's all part of that. That is the reason why we are investing in social emotional learning in our schools, because there's so many questions that are had and so many answers that you and I both don't know. But our counselors, our staff can help guide children as to, this is where you could find the answer. This is where you can look to, explore, and understand in a little bit of a different way, and be very inclusive, as you've said, in a diverse way of thinking, including diverse populations of people. When I talked last week, I didn't, and I don't recall if I said St. Catherine's, but I will share this, and I will stand by this. I have, I do, I'm constantly reading about districts making decisions. I can't speak for those districts, but what I can speak for is what we do here. I have not seen any literature that has been published where, and I'm going to speak specifically about the distance between students, because that is truly one of the obstacles that are holding us back from bringing more students back into a classroom. I have not seen any printed literature that shares that six feet has been dissolved. Now, I did share earlier in my conversation with the public about what Dr. Fauci had said, and what the, in his anticipation of what the CDC will do, and that's a huge change for us. If that comes to fruition in a timely manner, we will act upon it. And in fact, we've even had any conversations, we just early had a conversation early this week with the CGE about what is the road, what is the true road back, and how do we work collaboratively together? These are really positive, insightful, exciting things for us. As far as what other schools are doing, I don't know how they're doing some of the things that they're doing. We've talked about, certain schools have talked about Plexiglas, certain schools have talked about reducing space, and some of these districts are publicly putting that out there. And they may be, they may have been guided by that local health department, but what we're guided by is not that language. We're guided by, through our local Montclair Health Department. The six-foot mark is staying in place, the restrictions are staying in place. So I, quite honestly, I don't know how some of those advancements are being made in certain districts. I'm not here to judge them. I'm here to, again, factually look at those pieces, digest them, collaborate, and see, is there something that maybe I was missing? Is there something that I overlooked? But ultimately, I get that guidance from our health department, who ultimately gets that guidance, who serves all districts in the state of New Jersey through the New Jersey Department of Health.
My question, though, to you, Mr. Grasso, is, I don't mind, excuse me, I don't mind they teach this. I personally feel, this is my personal opinion, at that age, I don't think personally they should be exposed to that, because like I said, my children didn't know race. They looked at me as mom and dad, and they didn't look at my wife as now the Asian mom and the white dad. You see, but this is what, like you say, that's being brought to the forefront, so inclusion and that, and I get that, and I'm okay with it. The issue I have is the way it's being taught. Like I said, from the beginning of September to the end of, the end of February, which was Black History Month, they heard nothing but, you know, black stripe, you know, discrimination, and that's fine. The problem is, they're getting overwhelmed, six months of that, and now it's all about the women this month. I'm just saying, is my opinion, and what I suggest is, why can't we teach about all cultures, the way history really happened, where it includes people from all different backgrounds and everything? And it doesn't have to always be so much about, you know, bigotry and stuff like that, just teach history itself. I haven't seen that yet this year in my son's grade. I haven't seen it.
I do respect your opinion. One of the things I can share with you is that, one of the main purposes of our EDAC is for guidance and consultation and counsel. And I will share that our, one of the things that you will start to notice as we move into next year, is that we, there are, when you look at months that recognize achievements in particular cultures, those months are put there to highlight, the same way that we would highlight, if we look at a lot of different days that are out there, there's days to highlight, I think it was just Pi Day. Pi Day, wasn't Pi Day this past weekend where we talked about mathematics in general? These are moments that we have the opportunity to share specific achievements by people in, whether they're women, whether they are Italians, whether they are from the Latin culture. It's not just about black Americans or black culture.
But I don't see an Italian History Month, huh?
But what I'm sharing is, is that what you will start seeing as we move into the next year are movements forward of how we start to celebrate various cultures throughout the course of the year. And that is something that, again, when we look at the creation of that EDAC, we do not profess to know everything, but what we always can do is be better at what we do. I will share that, and I don't know if you had the opportunity to read the, my district update, I will put that out monthly.
I appreciate that.
But in each of those categories, North and South, and the middle school, the high school, you can definitely see how each school has taken their steps on providing that type of instruction, and they vary. And they're very creative, and they're very inventive, and they're very culturally responsive to what our world is. I will share this. When you share about seeing the differences and seeing various cultures, we're meant to see the differences. There is differences, and there's wonderful things that come from the differences. Advancements come from differences, achievements come from differences, and ultimately, understanding. If we can understand, if we can begin the stages of understanding others, whether it is Asians, whether it is Latin population, whether it is the Italian population, whether it is our black population, we start to have a better understanding about cultures, and therefore, our conversations can be honest and insightful, and breaks down some of those barriers that have plagued our country and the world for many generations.
Well, I understand that, Mr. Grasso, but my last thing, and I'll leave on that, my son is not isolated. It's not an isolated incident with my son being ashamed that he's white because hearing nonstop, like I said, from the beginning of the year, through books, through teachings, discrimination, constantly hearing this, and a large part of the day, and then going into the women's, and then African-American women, who, discrimination. I'm all for that, don't get me wrong. It's just that my son is not an isolated incident coming home feeling ashamed he's white. I know a lot of the parents, that their kids are coming home feeling like they did something wrong when they didn't do anything wrong. Or a black child going home saying, wow, maybe, you know, white people hate me because I heard six months of discrimination, slavery, and stuff like that. That's all I'm saying. I want to get to a better place, just like you. I come from a biracial family. I mean, I'm all on board with this. It's just that, like I say, and the main reason why I'm up here, is that it should be taught about all cultures as going through, and not saying, this month is these people, this month is that people. Because when you really look at that, we're the human race, and we all should be treated the same. And I know you're trying to do the best you guys can, but it's just that, like I say, this is, it's not for me, this is what the children are feeling. So I'm not giving any input to, this is when my son came home, and I'll be honest with you, Mr. Grasso, when he came home, I was devastated. Devastated. Believe what I tell you. I'm not saying there was intent. I'm just saying the way it's being taught, it's just segregating people, like, these people were the perpetrators, and these people were the victims.
I want to share this with you, and I respect everything that you're saying, but I will share that I have been part of some of those conversations that have happened in classrooms, and I've seen some of those things. And I don't necessarily, I'm going to disagree in the sense that, that teachers are teaching students who's the perpetrator as if it is a legal case. They're teaching history. How teach, how students, rather, digest that, and how they take that in, and how they start to question things, that is where I would ask you, did you have that conversation with your child? Did you explore those options? Did you talk about perhaps the social injustices that may have happened to you or your families, and how that plays into a better world which we all are trying to create? I understand these are very difficult conversations. I understand that sometimes these are taboo conversations, because that's how it has historically been. But the reality, I do want to share that our staff, and we move forward, we learn every day. We learn every day how we can become better at our craft. And part of that is, is training, professional development, and moving forward in the sense of, how do we start to open up a world for children to make their own decisions and their own questions? So all I ask is, and I appreciate you coming up here today and sharing that, you know, with me and the board and the public as a whole, and I encourage conversations like I'm sure you had with your child at home, with your son at home, and continue to have those conversations, and we continue to grow as we, as we learn more, and we instruct more, and we deliver more, and we open up more opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you. So the next two names, I think they, I don't think they wanted to speak. I think they had signed in when they got here. So I have Mr. Scanlon, who probably left hours ago, along with Dina Scanlon. So I'm going to move on to Mr. Tom Perry.
Tom Perry, 52 Cedar Grove Parkway, Cedar Grove. So I heard Mr. Grasso's comments, where he led off with the CDC's, the new research that's come out, which suggests that three feet may be better than six feet, or may be acceptable. And I know you mentioned that the CDC should be cascading this down, if they accept this, if they adopt this outlook, that they would be cascading this down to the state board of health, which would then come down into Montclair. If it does happen that they say three feet is the right guidance, are we ready to move on that?
So we've started our conversations in our planning stages, and we, you know, when this information came out over this past weekend, that was imperative for us to sit down with our staff, and we will sit down with our, later this week, we'll sit down with our administrative team to start to develop plans of moving forward. I will share this. I know I said this word before, but I am very hopeful about this moving forward in this way. When they do this, I will share this, there are times where I'm skeptical with this, because the CDC put out information back on February 12th, we're still waiting for some guidance from our Department of Health to help guide, and they shared their words where they were digesting all of this. But long of the short of this is, is that we are in the planning stages of implementing that. It doesn't happen instantaneously, but like I said, May 3rd is the date that I would look to share with, or sooner, to be quite honest with you, of how we would move forward for the remainder of this year, even into September.
Now, I respect that, for sure, but I guess the last time I was up here, one of the things I had asked you for was a plan. What's the plan? What's our framework? And now it seems like we've got an opportunity where we can get the kids in sooner rather than later, and it's like, well, once we know that, we'll develop our plan. Or maybe I misunderstood.
No, that's not what I said.
Then I missed, please.
What I said was, we are in the planning stages. I, it would be, and I think if you recall what I said the last time we were together, the last meeting on the second, I'm not going to share a plan out that is not, that is not fully sustainable. We're in the planning stages of doing just that. That incorporates spacing, capacity, that quite frankly incorporates, we're very fortunate that a large portion of our staff has been vaccinated. We're very fortunate for the fact that we were able to enact our employee vaccination program starting today for the first set. There's a level of comfortability for our teachers moving forward, which we are very respectful of, we're also respectful of the families, as well as the students. So all of those pieces, it's not as easy to say, CDC says three foot, boom, we flip the switch, we go right into action. That is, and I'm not saying that's going to take years to even accomplish that, I'm saying is that we want to be proactive with developing a solid plan so we can move back into that three feet, which is what we're planning, what we would plan to do if that is something that does come to fruition for us. But what I am sharing with you is that I'm not going to stand before you tonight and share a false plan, and then have to pull back and say, oh, you know what, that wasn't going to work out, so I have to go think about something else. I want to be very concise and very direct when I'm able to share with you, as well as the public, about a plan moving forward. I'm very hopeful. I feel very confident in this. The research came out of Massachusetts, which they have shared.
World Health Organization as well.
That's real factual information.
World Health Organization as well.
Correct. So moving forward, we wait to see what the next steps are, and then we will act upon that.
I got that, and I think we're very close, but what I'm still, so I'm hearing that there's a plan being developed while you're waiting to get the evidence and then have it cascade down, and then you'll pull the trigger.
That's correct, because up until this weekend, that was not even a consideration from the World Health Organization, from the CDC, even from Dr. Fauci, who I have no relationship with or Organization, from the CDC, even from Dr. Fauci, who I have no relationship with her, no, but I'm, I'm reading the same things.
He is Italian, like, like a.
So, that, that, that was shared this weekend, we, we were very proactive on this, we sat down, I will share, and I don't know if Mr. Canel is going to be speaking tonight, but we had a wonderful conversation with, with, with the representatives of our state teaching staff, about movements forward and being very collaborative. There's nothing, there's, there's nothing that would be advantageous for us not to entertain that, but we want to do it the right way. I don't want to do it with a knee-jerk reaction, and then have to pull back, and then have the frustration from families and from students, and from the staff, say, this wasn't well thought out. So, yes, that is exactly where I am right now, and where we are as a whole with that process.
Ms. Dai, do I have time for like, quick ones?
You do.
So, just wanted to know, was there any thought to, I guess, the in-person on Friday classes, or where are we with that?
Yes, absolutely. So, we have sat down, and we've looked at several logistical, I mean, this is going to sound bizarre, but several logistical models on how we would be able to do that, and it all is pending upon the ability of time, and the ability of our custodial staff to, to execute that in a meaningful, safe way. You always, you've heard me say before, I don't want to risk the, the quality for quantity, but we are currently looking at that, and there are, there are several models that we're looking at how to make that happen. If we are able to do that, you will definitely hear from me, and I will definitely share out that, and I know people would be very excited about that, but that is not, not something that I'm saying, no, 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 that's not even something that's on the table, it's definitely something that's on the table. We've had many conversations here in this room about that, I've had many conversations with, with families outside of this, and if we're going to do that, I just want to make sure we do it the right way, and it's a safe way, without compromising the, the quality of the work that's done on those days.
Okay. So, it's not coming anytime, that you could give a timeline for, at this point, you're still evaluating?
I would say, yeah, we're definitely still, we're still evaluating that. I, I, I will share with you, on May 3rd or before, I will be able to announce out to the public if that change is going to be had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
What zone is Essex in right now? Are we orange, or are we still red?
So, we are level high, which is orange, then it goes down to the moderate, and then down to low. So, we look at, so Essex County, excuse me, Essex County is in the northeast region, you'll hear me, I'll say this on every Monday night phone call, we're in the northeast region. So, right now, we're at a level high, and unfortunately, we are seeing an uptick in cases, which is troublesome, but we have seen the ebbs and flows to things that have gone on throughout the course of the school year. Our ultimate goal is, we want to get down to that low mark. I feel positive in the sense where more people become vaccinated, and the more, the weather starts to, to, weather definitely will play, and it's not, it's not a major mitigating factor on this, but it will start to change the, the flow. We saw that happen last year during the spring and summer months.
But that zone that we're in, Essex County, even if Cedar Grove has like, zero cases, we have to follow.
Yeah.
It, it plays a huge role.
Yeah, no, and you know what, the, the reality of it all is, is that we're, we are lumped in with, so, since we're in the northeast region, we are put together with Essex, Hudson, and Bergen County. You're looking at three of the most populated counties in the state, which is a hu, you'll very often see when you, and everybody can go on this, you can go on to the New Jersey Department of Health COVID risk matrix, if you look at the whole state of New Jersey, you'll notice Cape May County, there's some differences there, or rather, I forget, I forget what, what region that's in, but there's some differences, and it's based on population. So, in, in certain areas, you'll be a little bit more spread out, more, you know, less populated, but we, unfortunately, are put together in a, in a, in a region or zone that has probably one of the most highly populated areas in, in the state. So, it doesn't matter if Cedar Grove is lower, that's really what we want, because that does reduce the ability for us in, that, that does reduce our, our ability to, for transmission rate here in our, in our town, but that doesn't matter based on our region, and that's what we go off of.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Because that is a huge driving factor in this overall.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, when you look at this, I mean, and that's what we're waiting for from, from the New Jersey Department of Health, how, if we go into that moderate, or if we go into that low range, how does that change, what does that change for us? And that's not necessarily just schooling, it'll change a lot of things for us, just how we function, you know, in society as a whole. But, but, but what I want to just stress is, is that the CDC makes the recommendation, but every single state health department takes that information, they, they look at it, they disaggregate it, they digest it, then what happens is, then they send their recommendations down to the local health departments to then share with local education agencies. So, that's where we're getting our guidance and our lead time from, and I want to make sure, whatever we do, that we are not risking the health of individuals, because we're all frustrated.
Right.
We're all frustrated, we're tired, we're fatigued, we understand that, but like I shared at the last, last board meeting, there is a light at the end of the tunnel, patience is, is, is key in this, but we'll do what's right and what's best for our students and our staff.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Ornella Eustis.
Hi, I'm Ornella Eustis, 37, Mountain View Drive. I am here on behalf of my daughters. I know that they can't be here because they're finishing up quarantine. I will suggest if I could call them, if not, I will read their presentation for you. We know you may feel that our statement regarding the girls volleyball program has no value, given we are children, and more importantly, our fathers' daughters, but we ask that you hear us out anyway. Do you know how teams are selected at the high school level? We do, because when we were young, we asked our father, and he told us. It is not a unilateral decision in which each coach gets free rein over selections for their team. Because we have three teams, three coaches meet together and evaluate every player individually. The bias you allege our father to have will, as a result, have little to no impact on the final teams. Coaches Showmaker and Decourt will outvote him if he has a bad call. Coach Showmaker actually has the most sway, as she is the head coach. Now, more specifically, our father has coached us before for volleyball, but also for basketball and softball at the recreational level. Not once did he show us favoritism, or was he harder on us than anyone else. He treated us like his players, not his children. We never called him dad at practice. At practice, he is coach, we have always been able to make the distinction. We can never understand if this decision was made right, we, excuse me, could understand if this decision was made right in the beginning of the hiring process. However, it was made after Coach Showmaker and Mr. Gogarty made the decision to hire him. They believed it was the right choice, and everyone involved in the process knew from the beginning that he would have children in the program. That was no surprise. By making this decision now, it seems cruel. You question the professionalism of Athletic Director Gogarty, Coach Showmaker, and everyone else involved in the process. By stating that you were unaware that he had children in the program, you are hiding behind a false belief that he did not disclose this. As previously stated, our father made sure to mention this multiple times throughout the hiring process, he had nothing to hide. It would be a poor decision to reject our father due to his connections, than to confirm him based on his resume, which we're sure you already know. We're going to restate it anyway for others. He has over 20 years of coaching experience for both girls and boys volleyball, that's over 40 seasons and roughly 800 games. He has over 400 career, career wins with his boys team alone, and he holds the record for the most ever career coaching wins for boys volleyball in northern New Jersey. He will be a fantastic, knowledgeable, highly qualified asset to the Cedar Grove volleyball program as the junior varsity coach. He will help girls make the hard transition from freshman volleyball to varsity volleyball. Our father quit coaching girls volleyball two years ago, he did this so he could watch us play. We know he misses doing what he loves, but this by no means is personal. Bill Eustis would be a great asset to our volleyball program, and would help build it up immensely. However, as of tomorrow, we will not have had a junior varsity coach for two weeks. It is very difficult to try to build up a program when a staff position remains open, but I'm sure Coaches Showmaker and Decourt will continue to do an excellent job and make it work. However, they should not have to make it work, they should be allowed another volleyball-focused individual to join the staff. We would like to remind you that this season is shortened, instead of a normal three-to-four week preseason, and eight weeks of regular season, not including playoff games, we have eight weeks total. Two of those weeks have already gone by, that is a quarter of our season gone. It is going to be an immensely difficult, it is going to be immensely difficult to find such an experienced coach, willing to leave their position in such a short amount of time, as only six weeks remain. It is even more foolish to reject the one that has already presented himself to you. We don't know if anything we have said will change your minds, but we ask one thing of you, do what is best for the Cedar Grove volleyball program. Thank you. Alexandria and Amanda Eustis.
Thank you, Ms. Eustis, thank you, I appreciate that, and I, I wanted to share this, your, your children.
My daughters.
I'm sorry?
My daughters, not me.
I want, I want to comment on that, I know that you started that conversation off with, they didn't know if their voice counted at all. Their voice counts tremendously, and I respect that, I respect what you said. Again, this is, I, I appreciate you coming up and, and sharing your, you know, the voice of your children, and your voice of your family. Again, this is, this is definitely, it's a personnel matter, but I appreciate you sharing that with me, and I will definitely, you know, I will definitely go and take what you said to me, and I, I've received that, so I thank you very much.
Next, I have Chris Canelle.
Chris Canelle, I'm the president of the Cedar Grove Education Association, I'm a social studies teacher here at the high school. I want to congratulate the girls' basketball on a great season. For 10 years, I coached boys' basketball, and, you know, we had a lot of success, in fact, actually, it was one of the coaches for Coach Gogarty over 20 years ago, when he was a senior, time flies. I also want to wish Claire Swanson, congratulations on her retirement, and talk about, you know, what she has meant to this building, she's been here a, a very, very, very long time, and she's one of the hardest workers I've ever met, and this work is her life, and, you know, under the circumstances, you know, it's, my heart breaks for her on one end, but I know that, I think she'll hopefully, she'll pick herself up and dedicate herself to, to the next stage of her life. I'd like to address some of the diversity issues that the first gentleman, and he's not here anymore. As teachers, and I teach social studies, you know, one of the most important things is, is teaching history. And unfortunately, you know, in my experiences, as a student, and as, and as an educator, diversity has not been something that is a strong point for us. And I'm not just talking about here, I think it's as a society, teaching and, and, and learning about diversity. And when, last spring, when, when the situation started to happen out, and, and bubble up about diversity, there, there was a lot of talk within the town, and some incidences happened, and some frustrations were aired, and, you know, I had conversations, and I've said this a couple of times, with, with Ms. Dai, and we talked about what, what was needed here. You know, Cedar Grove is, is, it's a great place, I've, I've been here for over 20 years, and I will tell you that I, I've enjoyed my career here, and I'm looking forward to finishing my career, however long it's going to be, in, in education. But one of the things that, that, that has been a weakness, and I, and I tell, and we talk about this, because I teach a class called Contemporary History, where we talk about these issues, the seniors come in, they bring up these issues, is that, one of the things that our students lack, when they leave, and talk to them, and I've talked to them as, as they left, is, is the exposure to diversity is just not here. It's just not. And as educators, maybe we, we failed them a bit, and, and I think I've started to see a course correction, and I've said how much I appreciate that, because how much of an issue, the diversity issue is to me personally, and, and, so I just wanted to give some perspective, that when you make that course correction, sometimes it's, it's, it's hard to hear, it's hard to hear, because obviously, we're going to start highlighting things that have not been taught, that have not been highlighted, that have not been discussed, and these things are hard to hear. It's hard to talk about how our society has treated people of color. It's hard to hear how our society have treated people that it's not like them. Trust me, as a gay man, things have happened to me, that here, every, you know, and, and out, and about, the things I have heard, it's, it's, it's not easy to be on that end of it, right, to be on the end of, of, of people thinking that you are less than. As a white man, it's not easy to be in a room and have a conversation about how our history has treated people of color, African-Americans. But these are important conversations. The conversations about diversity when it comes to Italian-Americans, those issues I know are addressed, because I teach them. I wrote most of the curriculums, I've been here so long, I wrote most of the curriculums in this district. So, you know, when we talk about diversity, that's an important issue to me, and, and change is hard, change is hard, and, and, and it's difficult, but I think, you know, what is happening is for the better. It will make our students better prepared for when they go into colleges, for when they're not just in their Cedar Grove community, when it's mostly 90% people that look like It's important, and I think we need to continue this work, and I admire that this work is happening here, you know, this work is, 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 is finally happening here. So, on that, I just, again, thank you, and I, I wish the gentleman had stayed, so we could hear from an educator, and from somebody who, 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 you know, has done that work, but hopefully, he watches. On, on school reopenings, so Mr. Grosso did share that yesterday, we had a very long, good discussion about these things, and that, the, Coach Scanlon said it best, right? He said that they, this basketball team, and I know you, you hit on this, and you kind of stole my thunder, Mr. Grosso, this basketball team went undefeated, right? This basketball team went undefeated. How did they do it? The boys' basketball team had to get quarantined twice. Teams all over the state had to get quarantined. This girls' basketball team didn't, do you know why? Because they sacrificed, because they played by the rules, because they did things right. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and I understand everybody wants their normal life back. I want my normal life back. I love to travel and see the world, I haven't been on a plane since February of last year. I know, my, my privilege, but, you know, we're, we're getting there, folks, the light is at the end of the tunnel. A couple of things, the next two days, our staff members are getting their vaccines, I got my second vaccine, I spent 16 hours in bed with the reaction, it's not pretty, but they're, they're getting there, we're getting these vaccines, but understand this, if, if my, if my members are going to be safe, those who got their vaccines today will get their second vaccines in four week, in four weeks, they won't be fully inoculated for two weeks after that. Things take time. If we do move to the three feet, which I think the CDC is coming down any day with it, so we, we talked about being prepared, we did, we had this conversation, we still have to figure out, can we fit everybody? And they're in the process of doing that, they're walking from classroom to classroom, it's going to be a lot easier to do it in a high school where we have a lot more room, but give us time, let's get this right, let's play by the rules. This is important, people's lives are at stake. There's another conversation that we had, that Mr. Grosso hasn't brought up yet, our ventilation systems, the delay in the beginning of the year, we're centered around that. We have MIR4 filters, although, I will tell you, and I, this board has done such a great job of keeping these buildings up- buildings up to date. Let me tell you a little bit of story if I could have a little more time. If you've been watching the news, my colleagues, I, aside from being the president of the Cedar Grove Education Association, I'm the president, I'm the vice president of the Essex County Education Association. That means I'd only, only represent the 200 members, my 200 plus members in Cedar Grove, but I represent over 12,000 members in Essex County. Two of my locals in Essex County, Montclair and South Orange Maplewood, okay? They haven't even been back yet. Why? Because they don't, they haven't taken care of their schools. Because their administration has not been open and honest with their staff. What you have here is an administration and a board that when they saw a problem, the first couple of weeks were rough and, you know, we had to have some, you know, tough times, but we got through it. They've been open and honest. They've put it out there. They've also taken care of these schools. Are things perfect? No. We still have MRF4 filters that Mr. Grosso had given us a plan that's going to be addressed. But another thing about addressing is we need to keep windows open, right? It's still 22 degrees, unfortunately. So give us time. Let the weather get there in a few weeks, you know? Give us time, that's all I'm asking. We know where we're going. This is, you know, as we're going to buy some buses, okay? We got to drive the bus, right? We can't build it while we're driving it. So please, give us time. Be patient. Trust these people. They're being transparent. I will not tell you, I would not be up here standing and saying this publicly if that was not true. If there was something that was going to harm my members, I think Ms. Dai knows this, every board member up here knows this, Mr. Grosso knows this. If there was a problem, I'd be up here telling them, there's a problem. We can't open. Okay? Like I did in August. So trust. Give us time. It'll happen. We all want normal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we reached. We reached the end of our list. Announcement of future meetings, April 20th is our next meeting, same place, same time. And then May 4th, where we'll vote on our budget. Anybody have any closing words?
I do.
Okay.
I would just, I would just like to mention about the passing of a very special lady to the Cedar Grove community. Mrs. Tower was a crossing guard in this town, I believe, 30 years or so. I believe she had the same post for all those 30 years. She was a crossing guard right in front of Town Hall. They're a great family, the Tower family. Mike Tower, her son was on the police force. Her husband was a crossing guard, I don't know if he still is. But just a little shout out to the family because she affected a lot of Cedar Grove students and I think we owe it to her. So thank you, Mrs. Tower. She, by the way, Mrs. Swanson taught me. Mrs. Tower crossed us. So I do know these people and I'd just like to say a little something. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, kudos. These are just little cups of water for Mrs. Dai because she's having a coughing fit.
Oh, I'm so adjourning the meeting. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved. A second.
Anyone. Roll call.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Ah, yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, the meeting is over, thankfully. Everybody have a good night.
Good night.